Hey guys, how's it going? So I'm just gonna honestly take you guys along with me to work today. Um, I'm in school right now, um, in this little room. And so I've got around a one hour break. Luckily, it's Friday and so that's honestly like the only day. Or I guess I have another day on Monday where I can have a short break as well. So I'm trying to take advantage of that and work today. So, um, I guess there's not really any objective with this video. I'm not gonna try to talk about anything specifically. I'm just gonna take you guys along with me to work and just show you basically exactly what I'm working on. Just kinda talk you through what I'm working on today specifically, right? So honestly, I've been very focused on my personal brand recently. Cause I've gotten a lot of engagement and honestly, I see it as a really big opportunity. So I'm just trying to create as much free value as I possibly can to provide to my audience. And so what I did is that I recently created a short document a few days ago. I already published this, but I created a short document on why personal branding is like an absolute non-negotiable for young girls to start, right? Because personally me, like I don't see personal branding as a business model. Because personal branding is not a business model, right? It's an asset that you have to build. It's an actual business asset. Because if you think about it, when you're building a personal brand, alright? You could literally sell anything. You could sell physical products, you could sell software, you could sell digital products. You could sell any of these things, you know, going to have selling digital products is a business model. Selling software is a business model, selling even services as an agency is a business model, right? But all that links back to personal branding, which is just your asset, which is just the way that you represent yourself. And honestly, like what I did was I just started posting what I believed in. I just started posting my values. I started posting, um, just things about myself that I thought other people could resonate with. And one of my videos went viral, which is what got me quite a few followers. Um, and then, you know, a lot of people say, well, yeah, going viral doesn't mean anything, but it really does, okay? Going viral, sure, it doesn't mean anything in terms of having like a loyal audience, but it means that you went viral for a reason, right? And me having gone viral is an opportunity that I can't let go of. And that's why, you know, even alongside running my agency at the moment, I'm trying to see this as an opportunity that I can leverage, right? And I spent so much time recently studying things about personal branding, studying things about like what personal branding and the systems behind it actually do. And the different ways that you can approach it, especially as a young girl. Because obviously you can do it as being a coach, you can do it as, you know, all these different things. It doesn't really matter what business model you go for. You need to have a personal brand no matter what, right? And I guess that's sort of what I want to dive deep into and to understand, like fully understand myself before I can, you know, go ahead and teach it to other people. Because there's different ways to make money with a personal brand. Obviously, it's going down certain business models. But in order to do that, you need to understand how to actually build up an audience, how to build up your portfolio to actually attract opportunities and create opportunities, which is honestly amazing guys, because you know, I want, I've really started going all into my personal brand on Instagram specifically around a month ago, right? So in the beginning of 2025 and I already signed my first brand deal. So I got paid like fifty dollars per video, right? Which is honestly amazing. So it's fifty dollars per video and three point five dollars, um, per thousand views. So that's just honestly amazing guys. In thirty days, I already got that as a first opportunity. Um, and so that's what I mean, like there's many different ways to make money from personal branding. You can approach it in a way where you build a business around it. Um, or just approach it in a way where you just, you know, have a few little side hustles. Honestly, I don't really wanna endorse any of that, because it's not sustainable. It's just an opportunity that I took on, because you know, it's a first opportunity that I got with personal branding, which is still insane, you know, like I got paid two hundred fifty dollars, um, for like five videos and I'm probably gonna be making more. And apart from that, you know, I'm trying to, I guess, understand this whole personal branding notion as much as I possibly can before I can actually, you know, teach it to other people. And that's, I guess, the sort of what I'm working on today. I'm just gonna show you a little bit. I basically organized everything on, um, a little notion, um, which is super cool. It's like a little personal space that I organize everything in. And, um, so for today, I'm gonna film some short form content for my personal brand, um, on Instagram. So I'm gonna do that when I'm home and I actually have a good background behind me. I had a goal to film a YouTube video and that's exactly why I'm filming this right now. Um, I guess I'd go back home, shower. And, um, for the work usually today, my task would be to clarify this entire situation, right? You know, like I had this opportunity of getting a lot of views and I have a lot of people engaging with me. And I'm trying to figure out, you know, what can I do with that? How is it that I can master personal brands, because I can teach it to others? You know, so that's sort of what I'm going to be clarifying in terms of my situation personally and in terms of, you know, other things within personal branding itself. And then it would be to study content creation. And so I would basically study the basic things of content creation when it comes to Instagram short form content and basically trying to attract my target audience specifically. Because I think that me going viral on Instagram with that one video may have attracted some people that, you know, don't really fit within my niche, because it was kind of a broad video. So I guess I'm trying to really nurture that down with some free guys that I had, you know, that guy that I created, um, that free document I actually had. Let me just check that right now. So I set up an automation to basically have them comment and, um, have them comment that they want to get access to this free document. And, um, I had, I posted a story telling them to basically DM me the word da-da-da. I guess, I think it was the word brand and then I would send them the document. I had two hundred and five people, um, asking for the document. And then I posted an actual reel on my Instagram and a hundred seventy people asked for it, right? So obviously there's quite a difference in there and I do think that stories work better. So, you know, that's already some data that I can learn from and double down on, you know? So when it comes to actually building a large audience, that's sort of what you need to do. You need to be testing, you need to be just trying out so many different things and then doubling down on what works best. There was this one quote that I heard from one mentor that I really look up to. His name is Jordan Platten and he does SMM, right? Cause I still do SMM. I don't know if it's something that I'm still going to pursue long term, but it's still something that I'm working on right now, you know? And I'm actually getting quite some good results, not some insane results, but I'm getting a few good results and that's why I'm trying to stick to it. But Jordan Platten said that your road to zero, from zero to ten K a month is basically throwing things at the wall, just throwing random things at the wall and then seeing what sticks, right? And then the next step is to look at what stuck, just analyze it and then throw more of that, you know? And then after that, it just piles up, it scales up into an actual momentum that you can apply and implement, you know? And so I guess another thing that comes with that is with the video that went viral, I'm trying to, you know, sort of replicate that, but also integrate things that will be able to target the right audience, right? And I guess my right audience would be young girls, young girls who are ambitious, young girls who are looking to get into online business, right? And so I think if I were to teach anything first specifically, it would be how to get into personal branding, you know? So how to actually build up your portfolio? Because there's so many different ways to go on about, uh, making money with personal branding. I haven't tried any of that yet, um, so I'm not gonna teach something that I haven't tried. But what I have done is learned the basics of business, learned every single essential skill that you need in business, how to network, how to communicate. So I think that's definitely something that I'm going to be promoting and teaching, because personal branding is honestly just about having a skill, building an audience around it or not even having to build an audience, just having a skill, putting yourself out there and monetizing it, you know? And even if you're not building a huge audience and then selling a digital product, you can do that by just building a profile, getting clients and then signing them for high ticket, you know? So it's either you go for a high ticket or a low ticket, doesn't really matter. Uh, I guess with SMM, it's high ticket. It's just that I didn't have a profile. All I was doing was cold calling local businesses. But, you know, if you actually wanna offer services, you do need a personal brand. It's just I was doing it in more, I guess, like that approach, that specific approach, you know? But there are definitely other ways to go on about it, where you build an Instagram account or you build an account specifically. Um, I guess I would definitely recommend people to use Instagram more, because Instagram is usually more for like business interactions. Um, personally, that's my opinion. I feel like more business happens on Instagram than on TikTok, for example, right? So obviously it's good to diversify different platforms. But in terms of actually doing business, if you wanna get clients, for example, personally, I think Instagram is the best way to do so, you know? Because especially with our new generation, or whatever you wanna call it, that's where people usually hang out, you know, like young entrepreneurs. That's where you actually get access to these online entrepreneurs who are getting like six figures a month, right? So that's basically what it's about. And you just gotta learn how to actually build your profile that stands out and then, you know, how to outreach to them well, how to actually package your offer, how to actually sign them as a client. I guess there's that approach, that would be to just offer services and then there would be the approach of actually coaching and then there would be the approach of selling digital products, software. You know, there's so many ways to go on about it. And that's what I mean that by personal branding is not a business model. Because you could go on about all these different things, but what you need is to stand out with your personal brand, okay? So that's what it is. Uh, personally, I'm on a pretty different mission. I'm not just trying to offer services to people. I'm not just trying to get clients. I feel like that's sort of the more, um, beginner side of things. If you're a beginner and you're just trying to start a personal brand, that's definitely something you should do, which is to offer services, you know, offer some kind of service to other people. Um, but I guess my approach would be to sell digital products or sell coaching, because my approach is that I actually want to help young girls do this, you know? I'm not just trying to sell services, I'm actually trying to become a figure to help young girls. We'll go on about that later. I sort of need to get some work done right now and I'll take you guys along with me. So yeah, it would be to study content creation for today. I would study content creation. I need to check up on my clients' leads. So obviously I'm still running my SMM, because it's still like working well, right? There's no reason for me to shut it down unless they, you know, both leave me and I decide to go all in on my personal brand. I don't know, honestly, time will tell. But I'm gonna check up on some leads, I'll give you guys an update on that. And then I need to, there's this one video that I basically need to watch that explains a lot about personal branding. So as I said, you know, just study personal branding, study content creation. That's why I'm gonna watch this specific video. And basically analyze it. I have my book right here to basically note everything down. Um, and then after that, I'm gonna script some short form content. I'm gonna create more content for my brand deal. And then, uh, I have like a video on YouTube to edit that I haven't posted yet. But I'm gonna do all that. Obviously, I can't do that within the next hour, but I'm just gonna try to work as much as I possibly can. And I have a whiteboard over there, so I might be able to use, I don't know, we'll see. But we're gonna start with, obviously, I can't film the short form, I'm gonna do that at home. I'm already filming YouTube. I think what I'm gonna do first is to, um, check up on the leads. The problem is my software is not loading, my CRM is not loading, which is such an annoying struggle, honestly. And it's like, ugh, but, um, if that doesn't work, we're just gonna move on to actually reflecting. And then hopefully when I get home, I get better wifi, I'll be able to load this up. And then I guess I'll just start talking more on this video. You know, it's kind of funny, because I'm telling you guys I'm doing all this work, but me filming this video is also me working, you know? So I never ever ever run out of work, it's kind of funny. But yeah, guys, I'm literally in school filming this right now. Like, it's a little bit funny. And to be honest with you guys, like my Instagram, in terms of my personal brand, my Instagram and my YouTube channel are two completely different things, right? So my Instagram is actually where I monetize, um, it's where I try to find business opportunities. And as of right now, I'm trying to treat my YouTube video as something that I genuinely document on, okay? So I'm not trying to like endorse any, not endorse, but I'm not trying to go on about any business. As of right now on YouTube, I'm really just trying to document as much as I possibly can. Later on, that's definitely something that I would do. But as of right now, I'm really just trying to be as authentic as possible, document the entire journey that I can look back on eventually. That's sort of what my YouTube is about and then my Instagram is, you know, something else. And so, uh, while the CRM is clearly not loading at all, which is a little bit of a struggle, but, um, it's okay, we're gonna move on to other things, which is to reflect on basically my situation with this content creation stuff, right? So, um, if you don't know, but I guess you do know, I run an agency at the moment, right? That's not loading, but I run an agency and alongside that, I'm trying to build a personal brand. I've been running my agency for quite a few months now and, um, you know, it hasn't really gone that far. Yeah, I've gotten clients, I've gotten some money from this agency, but it's not really going anywhere where I wanted to, right? I guess my goal initially was to master the agency model, was to match, master like digital marketing, was to master, um, I guess like AI infrastructure or whatever, because that's sort of what I'm doing. It was to master that and then to teach other girls how to actually do it. But then when I think about it, like, guys, SMM is quite complicated. Like, I don't really care what anybody says, like, it's not that easy, you know? And obviously, every single business model is not that easy. But even if you were to do SMM, right? Think about how sustainable that would be. After ten K a month, after twenty K a month, it starts to get really like tough to manage, you know? And so, and the profit margins are not that good as well, because obviously you can't manage everything, you're gonna have to hire a team. And then like, sure, you're loose, you don't really have as much work, but your profit margins are gonna be like down by a lot, you know? So it's taken me a while to realize that and that's why, you know, I'm still running my agency, because I do have clients to manage. I only have like two clients at the moment. I have another client who, um, has taken a break. She started working with another, uh, agency. I don't think she's gonna come back, but basically like I still have my clients to deliver for, so I'm not gonna stop my agency. But I really do think that personal branding has opened more doors for me within this one month of me going viral than SMM ever has, you know? And that every other business model ever has. So like, I can't just ignore that, you know? Things that come your way, you just can't ignore it. You need to take advantage of every single opportunity that comes. And that's what personal brand has really allowed me to see, right? And, you know, there's so many different business model, money-making opportunities that come with having a personal brand, you know? UGC is a business model, digital products is a business model, coaching is a business model. It's just all linked because of the fact that I have a personal brand, right? Which is like awesome. And so, um, I guess I'm not just trying to build a personal brand, um, in terms of business opportunities, but I'm, because I'm genuinely trying to like impact lives, you know? I'm genuinely trying to help young girls get into online business and I'm genuinely trying to help. Yeah, I'm trying to help young girls build an abundant life, because that's exactly what I'm doing, you know? And I've had some people on my Instagram saying, oh, well, how did you become so successful? Guys, I'm not successful, I'm not. Like, if you go on my YouTube, you'll see that I'm still working very hard towards my goals. I'm still in school documenting me working towards my goals. But it's the fact that I understand the journey and I've already experienced things that have allowed me to grow to this point where I get access to so many opportunities. And I guess that's already something that I can, you know, teach and preach. And I guess that's what my personal brand is about. You don't need much to start a personal brand, you just need to have accomplished something in your life, whether it be like having an amazing glow up, that's something as well, guys. If you looked horrible a few years ago and now you look hot and everything, that's like, that takes a lot, you know? That's something that you can actually teach to people. There's just business models with, with everything, honestly, there's opportunities with everything. If you were unfit before and now you're fit, that's something that you can teach. If you got like bad horrible grades before and now you get straight A's all the time, that's something that you can teach. Teach your way of studying, teach your way of, you know, going about doing your homework, going on about memorizing things or whatever, right? I'm not personally like academically like skilled, but if that's you, then go ahead and do that, you know? There's, there's just so many opportunities that come when you have a skill and when you know how to actually monetize it with the right framework. Um, and I guess right now, I'm less focused on monetizing and I'm really focused on trying to build a loyal audience, you know? I do have a plan to monetize all of this and that's what I'm sort of trying to reflect on now. And I guess it's kind of funny, because I'm telling you guys that I'm gonna reflect, but me talking to you about this is actually my way of reflecting, so this is great, right? And I guess apart from like my Instagram and stuff, with my YouTube, I really have no specific objective other than to just document as much as I possibly can, right? You know, I'm trying to film every single day, which is a little bit hard, but I'm trying to do that. I'm really trying to document every single day, every single step. You know, even when I'm in school, guys, I'm not supposed to be recording this, but I have dreams to accomplish and I have to document it, because I know that later on it will be able to impact live, lives and actually by running you through every single thing that I do, such as this, right? And so, um, yeah, guys, honestly, like that's sort of what it's about. I'm gonna actually reflect on my content at the moment. Let me just go my Instagram here. And so, oh, turn the volume off. But like even another thing that I realized is that by having a personal brand, not only did I manage to connect with other people like online, I've actually had people in school coming up to me and be like, hey, you know, like you really inspire me, which like absolutely blesses my heart. Like I had, um, I had a girl come up to me and say, hey, you know, like I've seen your videos, you're popping off. Like, do you have any advice that you wanna give me, like I wanna get started? And I'm like, oh my God, like this was such, this was such like a unexpected opportunity, but you know, I'm gonna take advantage of it. And I also had this one guy, like I was chilling in the school lounge. And I was sitting down doing my work and he came up to me saying, hey, is this your profile? He showed me my profile and I was like, yeah, that's me, what's up? And he said, yeah, my sister watches your videos, she's super inspired by it, she loves your content. Can I get a picture with you? Because she doesn't believe that you're in my school. And I was like, oh my God, yes, like that's insane, right? Um, so yeah, even apart from like the opportunities that you get online, there are so many side effects when it comes to actually having a personal brand, you know? Just being able to give a good impression is like, it's gonna change your life, guys. It's really going to change your life, understanding how to give a good impression, understanding how to put yourself out there for opportunities, you know? That's how you actually attract and create opportunities, you don't just wait for one. And I think that's also the difference when it comes to school and academics as well. It's like, guys, you go to university for what? To get a job, okay? But you can't like create a job for yourself unless obviously you get into sales, but nobody like in university is gonna do that, um, because they don't have that understanding of online business. But they wait for companies to come to them to give them opportunities, you know? But I don't know, personally, I just hate doing that. I don't want to wait for opportunities, like why would I wait for an opportunity when I can create it today? I'm still sixteen and I'm, I'm over here like creating so many opportunities just by doing this, right? Just by putting myself out there on social media, just by putting myself out there and contacting people, right? And yeah, guys, it's insane. And so in terms of my content, I've noticed that there's been two, like there's, sorry, there's been one specific like, um, content style that has really worked well. It was this content style specifically that got me, um, a million views, you know? It's when you cut out, you sort of put it in the middle and you just talk with captions, you know? I don't try to edit my videos a lot at all, I'm really trying to be authentic in terms of the content. So, but I guess the format sort of impacts as well, I'm not really sure. I guess I'm still in that process of testing and stuff, right? But the biggest part about my personal brand about in the moment is the fact that I'm getting quite a lot of engagement, you know? With the free guy that I had mentioned earlier, I've had so many people DMing me and I've had so many people contacting me saying, hey, like you've helped me so much with this guide. And yeah, honestly, it's amazing. And guys, like apart from the opportunities that I get online, this is genuinely what I love. I love impacting people, I love impacting their lives. I love getting feedback of them saying, hey, you've helped me so much, you inspire me. And all these different things, you know, that's genuinely what I love. And I can't say that I love SMM, maybe I'm doing it in a very corporate model where I'm doing appointment setting with AI for clinics, you know? Like it's not ideal to do that as a young girl, it's probably not a young girl's dream. And that's why I sort of promote personal branding instead. Because girls wanna create content, girls wanna create, um, content about their lives, girls wanna create content about their passion, they do that for free anyways. They do that just to, you know, put themselves out there and just share their passion. But what I'm trying to teach and preach is that you can make money from that if you just have the right framework, you know? And so there's so many ways to go on about it. Um, I guess I'm trying to now find a way to teach it, um, in a very general way and to cheat it in a way where I understand exactly what I'm saying, you know? Because there's many things that I understand, but I guess now I'm trying to structure it in a way where it resonates, with my audience and where it can actually help them, you know? So, and by me doing that, by me actually teaching them this stuff, teaching them how to put themselves out there, teaching them how to build an Instagram profile, how to build a profile, how to like represent yourself in a way where you attract so many different opportunities, that's already something that I can teach, you know? Because that's something that I understand, that's something that I've like already done. So that's already something that I see myself, um, selling as a digital product, probably as a community as well, because you know, like I'll give you guides for free, I'll always give guides for free, um, I'll give information for free. But I guess the special thing about this specifically would be the fact that you'd have a community. You know, I'd probably host some like calls where I'd be able to answer like concerns and stuff. That's really what would bring me the money, you know? And so by me doing that, by me actually teaching girls how to build a profile, I also learn what it takes to monetize your audience. And then later on, that's when I could actually sell to more advanced, um, I guess creators on how to actually monetize your audience in a way that's profitable, profitable, in a way that's convenient. And you know, there's many different ways to do that. And yeah, guys, honestly, it's so overwhelming to have learned all of this in such a short period of time, you know? And it's, it's kind of scary to think that like, um, you know, the year is moving by so fast, guys, it's moving by so quickly. And the more like I am pursuing my entrepreneurial journey, the faster it gets, you know? Like I was at nine hundred followers like a month and a half ago. And now, I don't even know now, like it's, it's actually crazy. And I'm just trying to catch up to this pace, I'm trying to figure out like how I can help people, how I can actually monetize it, how I can teach people how to monetize it, you know? It's a very long process, but I'm going along with it, like I'm genuinely, I'm not just doing this because I love this, guys. I'm not just doing this out of a gut feeling and I'm not just doing this because I see it as an opportunity, but it's actual data, you know, like I've, it's, it's actual data, it's really what it is, it's actual data. Because I've tried video editing for the first six months of 2024 and clearly that, that didn't work. I got the data from that, I started pursuing SMM and now it's been like quite a few months into SMM. I'm getting the data back from this. I'm probably gonna make another video to dive deeper into exactly what I mean by the data. I'll get into that like in another video, but it's just about collecting data and making a logical decision. That's what you need to have as a business owner, that's what you need to have as an entrepreneur. That's the mindset that you need to have if you wanna get into online business. Even as a creator, you don't even need to be like a big corporate CEO, you just need to understand this mindset of being able to analyze data that you get back and just taking action from it. You know, it's the same thing that I had explained when it comes to actually throwing things at the wall. You need to analyze what works and then you need to go at it again. You need to make the right decision on how to adjust it, how do I like, okay, what is working, what's not working? How do I double down on this, how do I make it even better? That's what, that's what business is about, you know? You always get different problems to solve, you always get so many different things to overcome and to learn from. So what business is about, it's really what business is about. And, um, yeah, like I told you guys I was trying to reflect, but me talking to you right now is more of reflecting than me actually writing down in my book, right? And I guess what I really do with reflecting is that when I'm in class, sorry mom and dad, I actually cannot focus, right? I cannot focus with all these dreams. Sorry, mom and dad, I actually cannot focus, right? I cannot focus with all these dreams and aspirations in my mind. I cannot focus. All I can think about is my future. I've tried controlling, I've tried not thinking about my future. I can't, it always comes back to me, guys, and that's what you call real obsession, that's what you call real passion. And so. I guess I also see that as an opportunity to be able to tap to such a flow state in class where I'm able to. You know, block out the noise and actually reflect truly deeply within my thoughts, you know, instead of avoiding. That vision in my mind of my future. I like I can't avoid it. I instead of avoiding it, I just try to tap deeper into it. To understand my current situation and how I can adapt it to get to that vision faster. You know, that vision of me living that dream lifestyle that I always dream about. How is it that I can tap into the state of me just often. Thinking about my dreams and actually make something of it. And that's why like I have this journal, I have three journals at the moment. I might have to get a fourth one, but I have three journals at the moment, just full of reflections, full of notes, full of. Like diaries of me just reflecting in classes and me like expressing my thoughts in these journals. You know, like it's crazy, guys, that's all I do. Um and so, you know, I guess that's one thing. Um and I remember like usually on an average scale, I probably write around ten pages a day whenever I'm in class. Um which is like kind of a shame because I need to buy a lot more books to actually be able to fit all of my thoughts into all these different books. But this is definitely something that I'm gonna keep later on that I can look back on and hopefully. Maybe even show you guys like what goes through my mind in class, you know, and like to be honest with you, I don't wanna endorse like not focusing on your academics at a. Young age, it's just personally my journey and personally what I have to realize and I guess cooperate with. In my situation, you know, and um. Yeah, that's. There there's so many things going on like through my mind, there's so many things going on. Within my career at the moment, I'm just trying to catch up on everything. I'm trying to understand everything um. And I think filming these YouTube videos is really a way for me to help, is is really a way that helps me do that, that helps me understand sort of what's going on. It will go through my mind and at the same time I'm also sharing that with my audience um. Which is awesome, right? Which is awesome. I can actually help people by expressing these things. Um and so. Uh I don't know, man, like I, there's so many things going on, but even like as a student. I think one of the best traits that you can develop is having stress tolerance. Cause guys, remember, I go to school from eight A M to five P M, every single day with no breaks in between. The exams that come along with that are also things that I need to take into consideration. I I I don't know if I told you guys this, but I have exams on Saturday mornings. Can you think, imagine that, having exams on Saturday mornings, eight A M. To twelve, four hours ex- exams on Saturday mornings. It's insane, but. I guess I'm trying to cooperate with that and, you know, having, being able to have that stress tolerance of balancing. Academics, balancing all these different exams, because you know, like I'm, my high school's almost over. I'm. Working towards, you know, graduating, getting my high school degree, which is like the bare minimum. Um but it's trying to balance academics with also my health, so like after school, every day after five, I go to the gym. For like a few hours and then trying to balance out my relationship, trying to balance out my relationship with my parents, trying to, you know, still spend time with them. Uh like even a tiny bit, because you know, if you're still working towards your academics, like you don't know what's going to happen to your parents, like honestly, I know it sounds horrible, but. Really like so try and appreciate that moment with your parents. So it's trying to balance all that. Plus running a full-time business and plus trying to grow my personal brand and plus trying to document the entire journey. It takes a lot of stress tolerance to do that. You know, and stress tolerance comes with being able to control your emotions and being able to control your mind and actually act on logical decisions instead of up, you know. Acting on emotions, because like I'm telling you guys, like I'm like, I'm one pinch away from crashing out. Most most of the days, that's sort of what I'm feeling. I'm one pinch away from crashing out. But being able to have that stress tolerance and just act on logical decisions is really how you're gonna get far in life and, you know. Like I have so many things going on, but me being able to film this, me being able to understand my switch situation is a good way for me to. I guess reflect back, look back on everything that's going on and then just act logically. And so I guess the next action that I really need to take is to just stay consistent. You know, I have my audience, I have all these different things. I really just need to fully, fully clarify in a quiet space sort of what's going on within my environment and then be able to act on that, you know. Do I create a digital product? Do I actually just continue posting, continue nurturing? You know, there's so many things that come into. Considerations and there's so many factors that I need to, I guess, study, so. That that's what it's about. That's why you gotta act on logical decisions, just being able to analyze what's going on and act accordingly. And not act on emotion. That doesn't mean shutting off your emotions, you know, I feel every single thing that goes through my mind. I feel every single thing. I feel the stress, I feel the fear, I feel the pain, but it's being able to not have that. Influence you into taking out, into taking like a specific action, you know, to actually be able to. Just feel it and brush it away and to just stand on business is what it's about. Also learn the skill, so it's really cool. Don't try and teach that for your personal brand, okay? This is a skill that you should not try and monetize. It is absolutely useless. Okay, it's it's useless. So when it comes to actually building personal brand, you need to understand like the value that comes with that, okay? And obviously you don't wanna teach people how to fold paper. Um you actually need it to be valuable. You need to tap into people's pain, you need to tap into people's dreams. That's how you sell, right? And so, you know, even if you have like such a small, I guess, unpopular skill, like being able to cook, being able to. Take wedding photography, being able to actually take photography, being able to code, all these different things are things that you can sell and are things that you can teach. You know, it's just you gotta have the right framework and I guess I've been trying to study that, I've been trying to master that so I can teach it to other people, teach it to other girls. But I guess I would also structure it in a way where resides to my target audience, because I'm not gonna teach girls how to teach other people how to skate. You know, obviously it needs to resonate with my mission, which is to help girls become financially abundant, which is like a totally different thing, so. Yeah, I guess I just need to understand all that and honestly, I think this video has already been a lot of work, like I'm. Understanding a lot of things by just speaking, which is awesome as well, right? Um but I do need to obviously re-clarify my situation. Um to understand like my next steps, okay? And so I guess my next step as of right now is to. Continue working my agency, right? If this software loads, I guess to just continue working on this agency, to continue delivering. Um obviously continue working for the brand deal that I'm working with at the moment. And then to just, I guess, make content, continue making content on my Instagram, continue documenting my YouTube. And to, you know, find out how I can actually monetize everything that I'm saying right now into a product that will be able to help people. Um and so I guess I've got a lot of planning to do um. But I'm really glad that I filmed this YouTube video, because I guess this YouTube video is a way where I can actually communicate every single thing. That I'm thinking and then being able to look back on it and. Analyze it and understand exactly what to do, right? So I guess that's sort of my plan is to just continue documenting. Continue doing exactly what I'm doing, but to also um I guess. Like find a way to monetize all this, because this is a skill that I've already acquired, you know, it's not teaching girls how to become millionaires yet. Eventually, I'd love to do that, but it's still something that I can monetize and you don't need to have like. Ten Bugattis to be able to sell a digital product, okay? You really don't need that much. If you have a skill, if you have the right approach, if you have the right offer. If you have the right, right way to stand out, you can do so in any way possible. And you know, it's not even for selling digital products, when it comes to actually even being a sales rep, you need to have a good personal brand if you wanna get access to. Good opportunities, if you wanna get access to good jobs, you need people to represent yourself well. And I guess that's something else that I would definitely teach if I decide to make a digital product out of all of this um. Right now, I'm honestly just uploading guides for free to be able to build up that trust with my audience. And I guess it's been really helpful recently. It's allowed me to um, you know, reflect on. Like how engaging my audience is, um if they're even able to actually buy anything. Oh, in fact, I had a girl. Guys, I had a girl like a few days, this was last night. I had a girl tell me that she was so lost, she didn't know what to do, she needed a mentor and that she was willing to pay me to help her. And so I definitely see that as an o- another opportunity and obviously probably have a money back guarantee um. If anything, you know, but it's all about taking advantage of every single opportunity that comes your way. And with a personal brand, you create opportunities, you know? And you're able to take advantage of every single one of them and you're able to choose which ones to take advantage of. And it's it's all like very, you know. It's all very, very cool and, you know, guys, this is my feed right now, this is a private chat. Uh I'm definitely going to be one of those one day. But that's my feed, guys, like my feed, if you go on my feed, it basically represents every single thing that I think about. Um, which is, you know, cool, yeah, like having that life in Dubai. That's basically my feed. Um but yeah, if you're able to tap into a certain niche, if you're able to tap. Into a certain side of social media, you'll be able to connect with people who have the same values as you. There's so many opportunities that come with that, honestly, so. So I built in personal brand is so, so, so important, but. You know, I think I've reflected enough on this YouTube video. I'm probably gonna get into more detail about specifically what's going on within my agency and what's going on within my personal brand. In another video, but I really need to actually get to work. Um I think I've done all the reflection that I really need and now it's all about actually analyzing everything, making a logical, logical decision. And just executing on it, so. I, yeah, I've got a lot of things to do, but um yeah, guys, I'm I'm super excited, like I know this is going to work. You know, it's not just, oh, like this might work, this might be like a good opportunity, like I cannot afford to not make this work. I cannot afford to not make this work and that's the mindset that you need when it comes to businesses. You cannot afford to not make it work. Cause otherwise, what are you gonna do? You're gonna have a job, you really want that? I can't accept that. So that's why, like, I cannot afford to make this work, you know, because if I. If I do, if I do not make this work, which I will not. Like I'm, it's either, guys, it's either I have everything, I achieve every single thing that I said I would achieve or I have nothing. You know, or I like buy a rusted up car and I travel the world for the rest of my life. And go live in the mountains, like that's genuinely my plan. It's either I have everything or I have nothing, but I will never be in the middle. I will never be in the middle. Of having a job, I will never be in the middle of living corporately in an office or just staying in school, like no, like I'm not gonna do that, okay? There's too many things out there, I cannot, whatever, like that's. For, it's a topic for another day. But yeah, guys, like I'm gonna get get back to work. I'm gonna actually reflect fully on my next step. Um I already clarified the situation by filming this YouTube video, so I'm gonna just take that off. Um and also film the, take off the film YouTube task, because I already did that. Um but now I guess it's really about studying, be able to clarify my situation, um studying, 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 just creating more content and. Doubling down on what works, continuing to nurture my audience. And then um I guess after this, what I'm gonna do is to really. Reflect on whether this is an opportunity for me to monetize or not, you know, because I already have my audience and. I guess the only reason I'm not looking to monetize is because I'm trying to like build up that trust with my audience, but it always seems like I already have that trust. You know, I guess I just need to see whether or not there's a lot of demand and that's what I mean, you know, if you already build up an audience, you need to see the demand by. Offering free free value and then obviously like niche that down a bit by saying, hey, would you be able to like invest in this? And if you have like a hundred people saying yes, if you have, if you, yeah, if you have a hundred people saying yes. Sell a low ticket product for forty nine dollars a month, that's already like almost five K a month, you know, which is like crazy, because you don't do that much work and that's recurring. So that's really what I need to reflect on, but. Anyways, I hope this video helps you out in some shape or form, because I'm really just trying to. Blast my ideas out on this YouTube, because it's really my way to document, you know, me talking in a specific way in this moment. Me talking this way in the specific tone and the specific structure that I talk in with all these specific ideas of of my current situation. That's a way for me to reflect on and to understand exactly what I was doing in this time, you know, me looking back to this moment. Is what I will be looking back on and it doesn't even matter if what I'm saying right now doesn't make sense. It's just what's going on and that's what documenting is about. It doesn't need to make sense. It doesn't need to be structured in a way where it's all long term. It's just you need to express exactly what you're doing every single day and that's how you document, but. Yeah, I'm just gonna continue to do that. I'm gonna continue work. I'm gonna continue to stay consistent and success is really just about doing the same old boring things. Over and over and over again until it literally piles up into a momentum that eventually like breaks and rocket ships into a sky and that's just what it's about, right? But anyways, guys, I hope you enjoyed this video. I'm really excited to see where this is going to go, because I know it's going to work. I have so much faith in God. I have so much faith that this is going to work. And, you know, I hope you can watch along with me as I grow my Instagram and as I eventually turn my YouTube. Not only into like a sort of documenting channel, but also into a channel where I can provide long forward value, you know, that will be. For later, that is the plan for later. Right now I'm focused on these specific tasks, so I'm gonna execute exactly what I said I was going to do. And I will see you in the next one.